Right. Good evening. Tonight is Wednesday, May 28, 2025. You have tuned in or are attending the Milani Neighborhood Board May meeting. Welcome, and I'd like to call this meeting to order. First, if you are able, please stand so that we can recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
Alrighty. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Charlie, there. It's kind of furious looking there.
For those who wonder, we used to have a longtime member, Charlie Remington, who would always say, "Play ball," after we recite the Pledge of Allegiance. And since his passing years and years ago, Mike Dow has taken that role on, so. And Charlie is watching us from above. Okay, folks, just to jog everyone's memory, this is a hybrid meeting, meaning it was being held both online and in person. Anyone wish to speak, please raise your hand. I will recognize you. Please raise your WebEx hand. I will also recognize you. For those in person, when I recognize you, please approach the public microphone to my right, state your name for the record, and ask your question, address to the board, but to whoever is presenting on the topic associated with this agenda. With that, I'd like to take it over to our Neighborhood Commission Office Assistant, Rachel, to provide the roll call and establish quorum for our meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Rudy?
Present.
Present. Leslie? Present. Elise? Present. Michael? Ed? Present. Ann?
Here.
Present online. Sabrina? Present. Josie?
Present online.
Online, thank you. Rumi? Dennis? Present. Catherine? Darsha Lee? Marilyn Lee? Present, thank you. Trevor?
Here.
Present. Alex? Rodney? Skylar?
Present.
Thank you. Martina? Mary?
Present.
Present. Emil? Brandon?
Present online.
Online, thank you. Sharon? And Danielle? Present, in here.
Present.
Thank you. We have 15 members present. We meet the quorum.
Okay, welcome, everybody, and thank you for coming. We're going to go right into monthly reports. First up, Honolulu Fire Department.
Good evening, members of the board, members of the public. My name is Sean Ray. I'm the captain at Milani Fire Station. I will be presenting the statistics for the month of May. Incident statistics for April 2025 fires. There was one structure fire, no brush fires, three cooking fires, six activated alarms with no fire, 67 medical emergencies, six motor vehicle crashes, and one hazardous material incident. The fire safety tip for this month is home fire sprinklers. Fire sprinklers serve as the first line of defense against fires and often extinguish the fire before the fire department arrives. For more information, visit homefiresprinkler.org. Fire spreads quickly. A fire can turn deadly in under two minutes. Synthetic materials burn quickly and release deadly poisonous smoke. High-risk individuals in home fires include small children, elderly adults, those with disabilities, and pets. Fire sprinklers protect your home and family and activate automatically to control the fire, thereby giving everyone a chance to escape. The best protection is having working smoke alarms, fire sprinklers, and a practice fire escape plan. Information about Honolulu's ordinances relating to fire safety is available at fire.honolulu.gov. And I'd just like to review some of the questions that were asked at the last meeting. Excuse me, to refresh your memory, I'm not sure who asked it, but of the 81 medical calls, how many involved patients that were in critical condition, and how many times were patients transported? So, the answer that was given back to us was, in addition to what the captain had said last month at the last meeting, it's best to ask Emergency Medical Services, which collects data including medical calls and patient information. And the other question was, of the two brush fires in our area, how many were started by fireworks? And the causes of both brush fires were inconclusive.
Thank you, Captain Ray. Members of the board, members of the audience, are there any questions for the Honolulu Fire Department at this time? Okay, seeing no hands, hearing none. Thank you for coming tonight, providing your report, and let's hope it's a quiet one.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, Honolulu Police Department. Welcome.
Good evening. Lieutenant Ramal Baisa with the Honolulu Police Department, Waihau Police Station. I brought Sergeant Johnny Fiatoh with me. He's normally assigned to Waihau, but tonight he's covering the Milani area. So for the statistics, May 2025, so far, we have zero assault cases, two burglary cases, zero robbery cases, six UMVs are car break-ins, and then 693 calls for service. Our safety tip for the month, being that it's graduation season, whether you're attending, graduating, or working at the events, please stay alert, be aware of your surroundings, leave the venue with friends or loved ones. Try to stay parked or stay within well-lit areas. And if you're in a party, party responsibly. Don't drink and drive. We're going to have sobriety checkpoints all over the island. A question was asked the last time, if having the registration in the vehicle, not sure who asked it, if it was a city ordinance or a state law, and the answer is, it's with the Hawaii Rice statute, so it's a state law. It says that the vehicle registration needs to be in the vehicle. However, I understand the concern was that they want to take it out. That's fine. You can take it out every night if you want. As long as an officer asks for it, you can provide the information in the registration, and insurance, and safety check. Thank you.
Thank you. Members of the board, members of the audience, are there any questions at this time for Honolulu Police Department? Mike, did you have a question? No? Oh, okay. A Milani resident asked me earlier tonight, they wanted some additional details about the dead body found in the Milani Malka Park. I don't know if that person's here online or here, but could you elaborate on any more information on that incident in Milani Malka?
Unfortunately, I cannot say anything more than it was a male in his twenties. Firearm was used, and we're not looking for any suspects at this time.
Sad news. Thank you for letting us know. Members, are there any other questions for HPD? Thank you so much. I hope it's also a quiet one for you guys. Okay, next up, the United States Army Combat Aviation Brigade, 25th Infantry Division. Who will be speaking on their behalf?
I'm Specialist Clark with the 25th Combat Aviation Brigade Public Affairs Office.
Welcome, Specialist Clark. Please begin. Go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening, members of the council and members of the community. Upcoming job fair, the US Army Garrison Hawaii is holding its next hiring fair on June 24 at Kapolei High School, beginning at 8:30 a.m. and ending at 2 p.m. This is open to the public. There will be job offers and provisional hiring the day of the job fair. Advanced applicants may go to www.himwr.com. Click on the employment banner to learn of openings and how to apply online. Walk-ins are welcome and should bring two references, proof of ID, social security card, resume, or application. There are opportunities in business operations like golf, bowling, food service, and many more. Child use services will have openings to consider. For those who work in CYS, there are a variety of benefits such as retirement, access to all recreation facilities, discounted childcare, training, and commissary and PX privileges. If you are interested in working with children, we have a position for you. Come out and see what available employment opportunities await. US Army Garrison published the May Training Advisory for Oahu on May 1. HTTP backslash backslash www-army.mil slash article slash 284284. Any questions or to be added to the distribution list, please call the Community Concern Line, And we appreciate your understanding and patience. In May, the Army in Hawaii will continue training in East Range area with Ranger/Jungle Tactics, Small Arms Blank Fire, 1st through 3rd, 12th through 23rd, 21st through 26th, 28th through 30th May. And aviation training, 17th through 22th May, day only from 6 a.m. to 6 p.m. Additionally, on Schofield Barracks, there will be artillery and mortar training, the 1st, the 16th, and 17th, the 30th, and 31st of May. Day and night live fire, including late evening and early morning hours. If you want to be added to the Training Advisory List, email usag.hawaii.comrel@army.mil. Celebrating the Army's 250th birthday, the community is invited to join the US Army Pacific to celebrate Army Heritage Week at Fort DeRusi on Thursday, June 12, from 10 a.m. to 3 p.m. There will be static displays of military vehicles, equipment, and emerging technologies. Come speak with soldiers about their experience and learn about different career paths in the Army, including active duty, Reserve, National Guard, and Special Operations. Oahu Final EIS, in accordance with the National Environmental Policy Act and the Hawaii Environmental Policy Act, the Army published the Final Environmental Impact Statement, FEIS, on 16 May for Army Training Land Retention of State Lands at Kahuku Training Area, KTA, Waileua Pomoa Training Area, and Makua Military Reservation. The proposed action is an administrative action that does not include construction, modernization, or changes in ongoing training. The Final EIS assesses the environmental impacts of the proposed action alternatives, and no action alternative. Once the Final EIS is published, there will be a 30-day waiting period, followed by the Record of Decision later this month, later this summer. Also, for any concerns, please call the new Community Concern Line with US Army Garrison Hawaii at 808-787-1528. Or you can email usag.hawaii.comrel@army.mil. And following any questions, that's all I got.
Thank you so much, Specialist Clark. Members of the board, members of the audience, are there any questions for the United States Army at this time?
Yes, Robin, please come to approach the microphone, introduce your name for the record, and any questions? Good evening. My name is Robin Nelson. Question for 25th ID, with the environmental impact statements and all the UXO that's lying around, how often is EOD sent out to sniff out this UXO and dispose of it in a safe manner? Thank you.
All right, thank you for your question. I'm not entirely sure, but I couldn't get back to you guys with that for the next meeting. I just have to reach out to the contacts about that.
Thank you. Board Member Anne Freed, please go ahead.
Aloha. First, I want to thank Community Relations, Army Garrison, for giving us the noise updates. I posted on our neighborhood app, and people really appreciate knowing ahead of time when that stuff is going to occur. So I appreciate that. I have the same question as the previous speaker. My understanding is that the track record, and I am a veteran, so I can talk to this with some knowledge, has a really poor track record on cleaning up ordinance. So we would like some answers on that. Thanks.
Yes, ma'am, absolutely. I'm going to get on to that the first thing in the morning.
Any further questions for the 25th ID or the United States Army Garrison? Seeing and hearing none, thank you so much for your presentation, Specialist Clark. We look forward to that follow-up next month.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, next up, we got Kathleen Pahinui in person, representing the Board of Water Supply. Welcome.
Mahalo. Thank you, Board Chair. Please to report, no main breaks in your community last month. And as we're coming into summer, we just want to remind everybody to mind how you use your water. You know, don't water your plants or your grass early in the middle of the day. Do it in the morning or afternoon. Take shorter showers. Be sure you're checking your toilet for leaks. Turn off the faucet when you're brushing your teeth. Don't let it run. And we also still have a number of rebates on our website, including the $100 for your toilets, which we will continue running until forever. And any questions?
Members of the board, members of the audience, are there any questions for the Honolulu Board of Water Supply at this time? Yes, Sabrina, go ahead.
When we're reporting water leaks that we see, like sprinkler systems on the street or everything like that, what information does the Board of Water Supply need in order to track it down?
Address.
Okay, does it matter the time of day, like if it's a sprinkler system at night? Okay.
Thank you.
If it's not, like if it's in the median, is a cross-street good enough?
Yes, as long as we have a place that we can locate it with. And if you say it's in the median, about 50 feet up from whatever the cross-street is, that would be helpful. Pictures are great. Pictures. If you can take a picture on your phone and send it to us, that really helps.
We have a phone number. Where does the picture go? Text the phone number?
Well, you can text me. You can, or you, yeah. Or you can email it to us at contactus@hbws.org. Thank you.
Members of the board, members of the audience, are there any further questions for the Honolulu Board of Water Supply? All right, seeing and hearing none. Thank you so much, Kathleen. See you next month. And up next, Sherry, representing the State of Hawaii School Facilities Authority. Come on, come on down.
Aloha and good evening, everyone. Thanks for having me again. SFA has good news to report. The Legislature has approved a $2 million appropriation for the Teacher Warforce Housing Project on Milani High School campus. And before the legislative session ended on May 2, the Legislature passed the bill, which is now heading to the Governor's Office for approval. That bill title was HB 329, HD 2, SD 2, CD 1, relating to the School Facilities Authority. So we'd like to send a big mahalo to the legislators for their support, especially Senators De La Cruz and Kidani, and Representative Matsumoto and Lichika, who represent the Milani area. We also appreciate the Department of Education Superintendent, Complex Area Superintendent, Milani High School Principal, teachers, students, and the Milani community for their support. And thank you especially to Chair Bass and this Neighborhood Board for its continued support of the project. SFA will continue to provide periodic updates to the Neighborhood Board as the project progresses. And I'm happy to take any questions you may have.
Thank you. Members of the board, members of the audience, are there any questions for the SFA? Mike?
Is the final location of where they're going to put it on the campus made yet?
Yes, it will be at the Alternative Site B, which is the lower campus alongside Meheula Parkway by the athletic facilities.
Okay, the one where the garden is is done?
It's not going to happen there.
Okay.
Any further questions for the SFA at this time? Actually, out of curiosity, when will the new renderings and the plans be available to the public and the community?
I am not sure exactly when, but we will continue to work on all of the due diligence that needs to be done in order to produce those. So this support from the Legislature allows us to continue, and so we're very grateful.
Okay, well, we look forward to seeing how this new development will look and impact our community some more.
Thanks.
Thank you. All right. Thank you so much, Sherry. Okay, we're going to move on to presentations. I want to welcome Chief Operating Officer of Queens, Waihau, Robin Kalohelani. Robin is with us online today. Hi, Robin. Welcome to our Neighborhood Board, and please let us know what's the update with Queens, Waihau.
Thank you. I put a little bit of a slide together because I actually have some pictures. Wasn't sure if you're able to bring that up, and I can just walk you all through it, but thanks for having us. We're approaching one year in operation, so just wanted to show you a little bit of the staff and give you an update on where we're at currently and what we're working on next.
Bear with us. Our staff is putting together, or putting up the PowerPoint. Thank you. All right, all yours, Robin.
Alrighty. So you can go past the next slide. And to what we're going to talk about just a little bit. So, you know, one-year anniversary. I'm going to share a little bit about what our volumes on are, a little bit of safety and security for our staff and our patients, and then just the community outreach that we've been doing and involved in. So really excited about that. And a little bit of what the future has in store. So, next slide, please. So, did a little bit of a refresh here on the exterior. You can go to the next slide. On Friday, that actually marks our one year of being in Waihau. So that's a little bit of our caregivers right there when we opened up a year ago. Next slide. The team knew I was going to come and present, so they were really eager to kind of share their smiling faces here. So just excellent caregivers. Next slide. So in the months that we've been open for this past year, we're just, well, this was from April, but we've hit just about 20,000 patients coming through the door. Next slide. We average about 59 patients per day, but in the months of January and February, you'll see like a little peak there, and that was across all the hospitals in the state that we saw like this spike. Next slide. This is our duress activation button, so all our caregivers wear this. So in that little purple square there, if staff come across patients that are like aggressive, violent, they hit that, and that gets the security and other providers around to help secure the seat for the patients and for the staff. So you can see, like, over the months, we've had like 11, then the next month it dropped, it's just like a quarter during one month, we had a little bit of a peak, and then the next month it went down. So we have an evolved system where when you walk through the door, it's like a metal detector where you can go in. So any kind of large metal objects, it kind of will flag. So the security team will ask like the patients and visitors like to leave whatever that shouldn't be in the hospital at that door. And so the next slide shows a little bit about the things that we've been gathering from that. So you'll see some weapons, some illegal drugs. On there. Sharps, alcohol. But I mean, the positive thing with this is you'll see the trend down. So we don't want all of this stuff in a patient care area. So it helps deter and keep our, the other patients safe, it keeps our staff safe. Next slide. We've been doing a lot of volunteers' hours out in the community. So thanks to all the schools that have let us come in and do either health education or just looking at workforce development. We go around and talk to students and college students about, you know, volunteer hours over there. And also, it helps with like getting students acclimated to the healthcare system, so they can volunteer up at Waihau. They can volunteer at Queens West or or in town at Manamana. So just trying to like drive people into probably the healthcare sector, so we can keep our people homeworking. We did host a blood drive. That was a first that we had up at Waihau. So 14 donors, five first timers, two max red donors, which is probably, you'll see a lot of talk about that. They pull out just the main red blood cells there, and then they put the plasma platelets back into the system, so it maximizes their donations. And next slide, you can just see a little bit of the pictures of what events they've been out in the community. Next slide. We did several outreach surveys, so the teams love doing that. A little bit about the construction updates. So we're still focused just on the main emergency department footprint. The long-term care building has come down over the past month, but this is really expanding. So you'll see here in the different phases, right now, the priority is to get the mobile CT, get the CAT scan back in the building. So in that light yellow area, that's the phase one. So that's the first thing. And then the second phase is we're refocusing on the reception lobby area, expanding that and moving the lab to a permanent home, so that we can create the blue phase, which is additional care spaces. So more care spaces for the emergency room patients. Next slide. This was at the very beginning, like a year ago, when we took over the campus. You know, we really, it had good bone structure in the emergency department. So really just did like a refresh. So you'll see like the flooring and just a little bit more of technology added to the care spaces. Next slide. But this is kind of like the first date right here, and that's the mobile CT. So right now, patients that come in through the emergency and they need a CAT scan, they'll come out there, get lifted up on a lift, go in there for treatment, and then back down the left and back into the care space. So on the right, you'll see what the future state will be, where the CAT scan is back in the building. So that's just reminding, you know, better for the patients indoors, better for the staff, because they're not, you know, having to lift the patients up and escort them through that. So that's been the priority right now. Next slide. And then this is just a little bit of the future, the waiting area on the left. We're going to expand that out. And then a little bit about what the patient care additional footprint will look like for the emergency department. And that's our mission right there. That's all I got. Sharon Bass, any questions?
I can't believe it's been a year, Robin. Oh my gosh, it was like you were just here a few months ago. I mean, the whole team- I mean, the whole team and the certificate of need and everything.
Time has flown by in the blink. So on Friday, we're going to go up there and, you know, have some lunch for the staff. We have some balloons and just like some kind of fun stuff. We have a gift that we're giving them. I mean, they, the volumes have crept up. It's more than we than we anticipated, but they're doing a fantastic job. So I don't have like more strategic plans on what the whole footprint will be right now, because we're really just focused on getting the CAT scan in and re Jimmy rigging, you know, like that existing space so they can see more patients there. We've done good with recruitment for the most part on, you know, making sure that nursing is suffice for like the flows that come up and down. The patients that need to get admitted, that will either go to West Oahu or they go to Monamana Campus. That's working out well. When we get, when we have multiple patients that need to be transported, we've worked with EMS and AMR to like get the patients there safely and quickly. So overall, we are overjoyed just to be in the community and we're loving going to the community events.
Great news, great news. Thank you so much, Robin. Okay. I'm going to open it up to any questions from members of the board, members of the audience. If you have any questions for Queens. Okay, first up Marilyn Lee, and then members of the audience, please just stand in line at the microphone and we'll recognize you as well. Go ahead, sorry, board member Marilyn Lee.
Thank you. Thank you for coming. I'm particularly interested in in the hospital because I worked there for a long, long time, and it's great to see changes being made and the fact that it's still there. I'm sad to see the SNF gone. And I had a question about what happened to their many patients who were there. Did they find other care homes or long-term care facilities? You may not know the exact numbers, but you must have an idea.
Yeah, because it had closed down before Queens had taken it over. I'm not exactly sure where they went, but they were closed, I think, at least a year or two before we got it. But we do, right now, it's a challenge across the state for SNF placement right now.
Yeah. So yes, I know that it is, and it's a challenge for the people in Wahua too, lived close to their patient and could visit often. Thank you very much. Thank you, Chair.
Members of the board, any other questions? Okay, I see Kero Zala would like to address Queens. Go ahead.
Hi, I was just wondering when you're expecting to fully complete construction of the whole hospital, just like a rough year, month ETA?
So for the footprint of the emergency room, we're hoping for within the next 24 months on it. So it's kind of staged, like we get one thing done so then we can move the next, but that's just expanding the footprint of the emergency department.
Robin?
Yes.
Hello, it's Robin. I'm sorry, Robin, first and foremost. Secondly, I know last meeting I asked Straub about their mental health care. What does, this is a two-parter, unfortunately, what does the mental health care at Queens look like? I know you guys have some ER rooms set up. I used to be a security guard working in mainland. Wasn't fun. Good luck on that. Do you see many involuntary holds for SI or HI? When it comes to mental health. So first, what does mental health care look like? And then second of all, involuntary?
No, great, great question. Queens recently acquired Kahimohala. Right now, it's, that's just adolescent behavioral health. But definitely a need across all health systems for behavioral health. At Wahua, we don't have safe rooms, you know, like typical behavioral health rooms. So if we have someone that comes in, they are put with a sitter over there to make sure that they're safe and others around them are safe. Queens West is building additional beds going on, and then Monamana Campus is opening up that, and they're expanding their behavioral health services also right now. Just strategically, I think we're trying to figure out, like, we have a nice property with Kahimohala, like how we can expand into that. But right now, it's just focused on adolescents.
Okay. Are there any final questions for Queens Wahua at this time? Okay, seeing and hearing none. Thank you so much, Robin, for being here with us for that presentation, and congratulations on your one-year anniversary.
No, thank you so much for having us.
Thank you. Okay, folks, next up, we have a presentation from Nate Cerota from the City and County of Honolulu Department of Parks and Recreation. This is in regards to the city, the Department of Parks and Recreation's proposal for dog-friendly parks. They've provided a letter to all board members, I believe it's about a month ago regarding this initiative that DPR is doing. And so Nate will be presenting this proposal specifically to the parks within the board's jurisdiction. Welcome, Nate. Thank you for being here with us tonight.
Thank you for having me. Good evening, everyone. So really, the thing that I wanted to highlight with this presentation is a map that we created. So as Chair Bass mentioned, there is a letter that was sent to each Neighborhood Board back in April, almost exactly a month ago, that outlined the effort and also listed the parks that were in your area and noted which ones specifically have dog privileges, whether that's on-leash or off-leash. And so within the Milani area, there's actually 13 city parks, and only one park is an on-leash dog park.
Nate, I'm sorry, Nate, we're having some trouble hearing your audio. It comes, it cuts in and out.
One second, let me go grab a microphone. One sec.
I think he went to go get something to help his audio.
All right.
So if you can start again discussing the parks within the Milani Board's jurisdiction. Thank you.
Okay, how is that? Is that better? Better?
So far, yes.
Okay, good. All right. Technology is amazing until it doesn't work. All right. So as Chair Bass mentioned, we did send a letter to each of the Neighborhood Boards about a month ago in late April. And each of the letters was actually not better. Third time is the charm. How about now?
So far, yes.
Okay. Hope it stays that way, because if it's not, then I'll try the internet connection. About a month ago in late April, and each Neighborhood Board actually got a custom letter basically outlining which parks were in their area and which of them did already have leashed or off-leash dog park privileges. And of the 14 parks that are in your jurisdiction, only one is an on-leash dog park over at Milani Wahana Neighborhood Park.
That Anne Freed has and if you can take your mic off. Mute yourself so that we don't have feedback. Okay, try again, Nate.
Sure. Is that better?
Yeah, please.
Sure. So, yeah, so and I mentioned specifically the parks in your neighborhood because this is actually very indicative of a lot of the parks across all of the 305 parks in, on the island of Oahu that we manage, where less than 15% of them have either on or off-leash dog park or dog privileges. And so we really recognize that, you know, having a dog in a park is really a great way to activate underutilized space. And that this is really an activity that we actually want to encourage when it's done responsibly.
Phone, Rachel.
Hi, Nate. It's Rachel. Camera in case that might help with the action.
Okay, so please continue. Off, sorry, Nate.
No, it's okay. I'm sure you guys see me enough anyway. So, yeah, so we basically wanted to reach out to every single one of the communities to see where they would like to potentially see these on-leash dog privileges, understanding that really there is a growing community of people who have dogs. I think it's really, you know, half of the households around Oahu have a pet or a dog of some sort. And so we want to make more of our parks available. Is it, you folks still having trouble hearing me?
I'm sorry. Online, is it also well, or is it? Could Scott or Ross answer my question?
We're able to hear completely fine.
Is Aaron? Okay. I reached.
Do you recess the meeting? Direct the issue?
So. Can do that then. Recess.
Will recess due to technical difficulties? Please stand by. Thank you.
I switched over to a different connection as well, too. I was using the phone, but this is the wifi. This is any better.
Nate, you'll have to stand by because we're in recess. They're not able to respond back to you. Other microphones are turned off.
Basically.
I can see you. You can hear you. You're doing well, and your microphone turned on again. So you might want to remute again.
Roger that. Thank you.
Okay, we're here. I need to know when you're back on.
Hello?
Okay, is anyone else on your hotspot, or is it just you?
The problem was.
Yeah, that's okay.
Test, test. Nate, Nate, can you hear me?
I can, yes. Can you hear me?
I can. Speak a little bit more.
We, the people, in order to form a more perfect union, establish justice, ensure domestic tranquility.
Great job. Yep. Okay. All right. We're back in session. Reset. We, we're going to finish this recess, and we're going to go back into Nate Cerota's presentation on dog-friendly, dog-friendly city park proposal for Milani. Please proceed, Nate.
Sure. So I left off with the reason that we're doing this proposal is we're really trying to expand the amount of parks that have on-leash privileges. And really, as I mentioned, the less than or more than 85% of our park properties do not allow dogs in any capacity, whether that's leashed or unleashed. And so we wanted to, you know, expand that opportunity to this growing user group, but we wanted to do it the right way. And so we're coming to each of the Neighborhood Boards. And really, what we're looking to get out of you folks is ideally, it'd be like a resolution or some documentation showing some consensus amongst the community where they would or where they would not like to see on-leash dogs allowed in their parks. And it doesn't have to be necessarily an entire park location. It can be a section of a park, or it can be just the entire park itself. So I shared my screen, and in that letter, we actually created a link, we had a link to this custom map that has the geographic areas for each of the Neighborhood Boards, has each of our city park locations, and then those little red dots are the locations that have either an on-leash or off-leash dog privilege. So you can see that's your Neighborhood Board 25 area. And I'll zoom in, and you can see just one red dot within that area. But you have all the park locations are what's outlined in green there. So you folks have a lot of potential areas that could be proposed for on-leash privileges. But again, we wanted to give you folks the opportunity to chime in, and ideally, by the, by fall, around September timeframe, if you could let us know which of these parks you would or would not like to see on-leash privileges. you would or would not like to see on leash privileges, um that'd be ideal. Um again, but you know, the, if you folks need more time to discuss this, that's totally acceptable. This isn't like a one and done type thing. If you folks want to take more time to have that discussion or come back to us at a time, uh we could certainly take that into consideration as well. And the reason that we're going for um the on leash privileges right now as opposed to off leash is really um, it's the low hanging fruit. So with, to make a park uh allow on leash dogs, it really just requires uh the director's approval. But again, we wanted to get the consensus from you folks uh on where you want to see that privilege. And it would just be logistically a matter of changing the park signs that go from no animals allowed to leashed animals allowed. And so I didn't want to take too much time with um this kind of preamble. And because I wanted to hear from you folks uh with your initial thoughts, um but by all means um use the rest of the summer uh to discuss where you would potentially like to see on leash privileges in Milani.
Thank you so much Nate for your patience and thank you for that presentation. Really appreciate it. Uh members of the board and members of the audience, are there any initial questions? I believe you phrased it. Um and initial feedback to Nate regarding the uh proposal for dog parks uh in the Milani Board's jurisdiction. Karumi, go ahead.
Thank you, thank you Nate. It's Kurumika Apanaki. And um I'd like to uh recommend that the David Nakamura Park in Sub District Four, right next to the Y W C A, not be considered for on leash or off leash dogs. Uh there are numerous sporting teams, including our high school teams, that use that field. And there has been major complaints even before your proposal of an idea that unfortunately, we have dog owners that do not tidy up after their dogs. And it's become very problematic for players who find themselves um sliding into these mess. And it's a very beautiful park. The perimeter is surrounded by trees, so the center of it is reserved for active sports playing, soccer um. Sometimes uh uh well, mostly soccer, I think. But um it would be a shame to allow, and I am a dog owner, so I can see both sides of it, but unfortunately, to allow it to get uh more usage by animals would be detrimental to our children and adults who use the park. Once again, it's the David Nakamura Park next to the Y W C A.
Sure, I think you're referencing um Mi- Mike Michael Nakamura, correct?
Yes, yes, Michael Nakamura. And I did say Y W C A, I meant the Y M C A.
No, totally fine.
Okay, uh Sabrina. Oh, go ahead Nate, sorry.
I was gonna say, um thank you for bringing that up because actually when we started discussing this internally, the, the two big concerns um that we heard, and that's one of them, uh that there are, you know, irresponsible dog owners that don't pick up after their dogs. And then two, what about uh unleashed dogs or dogs that are, that their owners can't control? And so to speak to, to your concern first about the irresponsible dog owners, one thing that we're looking to do uh to pilot out as kind of a, to test it out at certain park locations is to potentially have dog waste bag dispensers um at certain park locations. Uh so we've actually seen a few of these around town. Uh the Waikiki Business Improvement District installed a few of them along Alaway Canal. And they've told us that they've actually seen a pretty good improvement in the amount of fecal matter that they've seen on the ground because they provide uh those waste dispenser bags. And when I've checked them out, they've actually, they haven't been vandalized. There's actually bags inside of them. And it was, they were accurate that there was not as much fecal matter, if any, on the ground. So that's one thing that we'd like to consider uh to try and offset some of that bad behavior. And the other would be uh just kind of, the idea with extending this privilege is also to put the emphasis on dog owners that, hey, this new, the, a lot of these more parks are gonna be available to you legally to walk your leash dog. It is incumbent upon you to act on the best, your best behavior. And if you see poop that's on the ground, pick it up. Because most dog owners are responsible and do pick up after their animals, and they have those bags that are available on their leash. And so, you know, uh from the people that I've talked to, I've told them, if you have the bags and you see another mess, pick it up because it reflects negatively on all the dog owners. And so the hope is that, that this behavior would kind of hopefully carry over that sort of kind of shared coolly on a, once this privilege is uh expanded. Uh but definitely we see your concern and, and athletic fields are, you know, uh we want to maintain the the cleanliness certainly for those areas. So a periphery area is a good idea if that's the route that you folks want to go.
Thank you Nate. Next up, we got a question from Sabrina. Go ahead Sabrina.
Um in reading your proposal, I was looking for clarification on a few items. Can you clarify um right now if it, dog is not allowed leashed or unleashed in the park? Uh what are the repercussions?
So it'd be a park rule violation. Uh so typically, it's a, it's a misdemeanor, but in a lot of cases, you do actually have to appear in court uh for park rule violations. Um in a lot of cases, you know, most people, you can when a park is closed or um, you know, when it's, you know, restricted for whatever reason, you can still traverse the park to, you know, go to the ocean or go to another location. And the same is true in most cases for walking your dog. If you're walking through the park, most of the time, you're not gonna, you know, that's no one's gonna cite you for a park violation because you're traversing through the park. It would be if you remain in the park with your leash dog, uh that you could be possibly cited.
And to the best of your knowledge, in the last year, how many people have been cited for dogs in non-friendly dog parks?
I'm not sure about that. I just know about a few cases. I know kind of District Park has had quite a few violations. The most notable one though is Alamoona Regional Park, uh because there's been a concerted effort uh to crack down on dog walkers there. Um and I can tell you firsthand that there's still lots of people walking dogs throughout Alamoona Regional Park. Uh even though there is that restriction and that increased signage and increased enforcement, uh people are still walking their dogs through that area. But specifically, how many citations have been given uh for walking, having a dog in a park where you're not supposed to have them? Uh I'm not sure.
So by expanding the number of parks where leash dogs can walk through, the only or, or be in, the only thing that we're allowing to have happen is them to have permission to be there with dog sporting events then as well?
It'd be more than they can remain in the park with your leash dog. And that also they would have protection in case there, so there have been cases where people have been walking through the park and they still have been cited. So it would provide them the extra protection of knowing that they are allowed to have their dog in the park, either remaining and walking. Uh it's just that, again, in most cases, the police aren't gonna cite folks for walking a dog through a park because they're traversing through it. So for instance, you know, in most cases, like if you're in a park after hours and a, and a police officer comes, comes and sees you there, more than likely what they'll do is they'll tell you to leave. Uh and if you, and if you leave, then all's well, but if you don't, then you're liable to be cited.
Okay, I see further questions from Board Member Josie Kaunehi followed by Anne Freed. Go ahead Josie. Josie, can, you may need to unmute so that we can hear your question.
I'm sorry. In a perfect world, it sounds really great, but we have um stations all over Milani. We still have bunkers everywhere. Holoholo has uh permits to allow dogs in there, but they do a great job because they monitor it and they make sure everybody cleans up. Nakamura Park. People constantly let their dogs run through there and these, um the soccer players, my son bit by a rottweiler from somebody who let their dog go. I had to pay for a medical and he's permanently injured because of that. So is there a email or some kind of a survey or something that's gonna go out? It's gonna allow us to give input?
Uh no, there won't be like a digital survey. So the idea was that these discussions would happen at the neighborhood board, kind of what we're having right now. Um because it would, it would be a bit difficult to have unique surveys for each one of the, the thirty-three neighborhood boards. Uh first of all, I'm, I'm sorry to hear about your um, your son being bit by a rottweiler. Um to on a, a topic that I mentioned earlier, um the legislature passed a, a new law um this, last year that goes into effect in July that makes the penalty worse uh for if you, if a dog attacks a person or another dog. Granted, that's, doesn't, you know, do anything to to repair the damage that's done, but at least i- it increases the penalty in that regard. But yeah, that's the dangers that, you know, allowing dogs to unleash. Uh there are certainly unfortunately folks who do uh have their dogs offleash and that's kind of the, again, the part of the shared coolly on and that we're gonna try and emphasize is that you really need to know your dog. That's kind of the main thing when you're a dog owner is knowing what things may trigger them, what situations are, you know, potentially uh dangerous for them, and then also how to control them from doing something like that. So again, sorry to hear about that incident.
Thank you.
And you have a question?
I don't. So this is follow up to what has just been said, the, the, you know, the question for me is one of enforcement. And you know, my reading of uh criminal behavior is that what works is not enhanced penalties, but the immediate threat of being caught. So my question is, you know, we used to have like neighborhood watch. Can we do something, uh maybe you, this is something you could work with HPD on to have uh someone on site if you're, if, if we're gonna do this. And I really have, I mean, fur, people with fur babies have on this very small island do have very few choices with where they can take their animals. So I have empathy. But also, you know, have someone who lives in a dog friendly community. I am aware of the problem. So my question then is, you know, is there some way that someone, if we're gonna open up the park, can be assigned community member authorized to issue citations? Is in my neighborhood, Waikalani Woodlands, we have a lot of dogs with a lot of dog problems because we're intentionally find the Jesus out of them. And the finding system works. So my question is, what can we do to have something like that in dog friendly parks?
So we've explored the idea of park rangers uh within our, our parks. Right now, we're still going through a pilot program with that, but uh they're actually focused more on illegal commercial activity than they are on any other type of park violation, simply because that's one of the biggest complaints that we got along our shoreline parks. Um the, there used to be a branch or I guess a division within HPD that was focused on parks. Uh but that unfortunately got disbanded, I want to say twenty-five, thirty years ago, something like that. So really, uh right now, we rely on the Police Department for enforcing park rules. Um granted, that's, you know, not to say that we couldn't explore that idea in the future. Um but in the immediate future, right now, uh we still would rely on them. Uh the idea of a neighborhood watch is a good one, where if you want, if you folks had a neighborhood watch and they were going around um empowering them with the information about, you know, what is and what is not allowed in the parks regarding uh leashed or off leash dogs, um would certainly help.
Members, are there any further questions for department or members of the board, members of the public? Are there any further questions for the Department of Parks and Recreation regarding this presentation at this time? Sabrina, go ahead.
Um is there a way that um members of the community can get a hold of you to give you their opinion on what dog parks they want or don't want?
So my hope again was that the neighborhood boards would be kind of the forum for these discussions. Uh again, because there's thirty-three neighborhood boards, there's three hundred and five park locations around the island. Um it would just be significantly easier and actually so, and much more uh democratic to have these within the neighborhood board system because you know, I'm, I'm not a huge fan of the sque- the squeakiest wheel getting the grease. I would rather have these open to the entire neighborhood, the entire community to have these discussions as opposed to the few people who reach out to me directly. So they can certainly contact me and I get more than happy to have a discussion with them. Uh but again, I, what I'm looking for or what we're looking for in the department more is like a resolution or to have, for you folks to have kind of discussions over the next few months, and then to come to us with suggestions on where you would or would not like to see uh leash dog parks. And by all means, if, if you folks uh can't reach a consensus and it does, you, you know, there's um, you don't want to make any changes, that's totally acceptable as well.
Are you aware that what you're asking is a little problematic for the neighborhood boards because of sunshine law and because we are told as board members, we're only allowed to ask you questions and not provide our opinions?
So I've heard different things from different boards. Um as a civil servant, I think the benefit to us of these neighborhood boards is that you folks are the conduit between government and the community. So. My hope is that you guys would be able to have these discussions. As far as I know, if you have it on your agenda as a, a voting item, something that's gonna be put to a vote, um and there is a resolution that's already posted online, you know, it's part of the agenda or it's on uh your specific website within the NCO's office, um that that would suffice for sunshine laws. Now, I've, I, I know that different chairs have different interpretations and they conduct the neighborhood boards in different manners. Um but I, for us, that would be enough of a indication of the community's consensus and what way that you folks would want to go. Um because again, legally actually, for the cha- for us to change a park from a leash park from a park that has no leash privileges to a park that allows unleashed dogs, it's actually just the director's approval, that just the director of the Department of Parks and Recreation, Laura H. Thielen. But again, we don't want to do that. We want to have input from each of the communities because you folks know your parks best.
Okay, the, this brings up really good points. Um and we have been advised by NCO relating, you know, that's why we've built out this very uh clear agenda. So we cover questions and uh timelines in which we're able to address the respective presenter. Uh we were advised by the NCO that we can only ask questions as board members at these uh public meetings of the Milani, uh at neighborhood boards, not just Milani, but this was the advice that we were provided by NCO via um, by NCO through an OIP letter to the NCO. Uh to meet sunshine law, actually, before I continue my frame of thought, Nate, remind me when you need this feedback ideally?
Ideally, September or sometime this fall would be great, but again, if you folks need more time, more than happy to provide it for you. And this does not have to be the end of the discussion. If you folks come back to us next year uh with, hey, you know, after further consideration, we want to have a Maka Unalau Community Park uh as an unleashed dog park. Certainly, that's perfectly fine. Uh just that with this first kind of initial round, we wanted to give, to try to give a timeframe so that we could kind of have a, a, a bunch, a few parks uh within this first batch uh to make them on uh unleashed within the first round.
Okay, so this was a very insightful and informative initial presentation. Thank you so much Nate, and I just want to stress that initial presentation. And so I think for further action, uh this is what I'm just thinking out loud, members. Um clearly, we have a committee of Parks and Recreation led by Sabrina Gustafson. And so um what I would like to do is uh have a informative phone call with the NCO regarding um what we can do in this timeline and how we can increase outreach for the Milani comm- and YPO Melamano Community. Um I think the best vehicle would be to actually utilize the committee um compliant with such sunshine law to have meetings. And in terms of outreach, we can explore options so that we can ensure that there is um helpful and informative feedback from neighborhoods and community members from the area so that they can weigh in through this timeline. Um I will note that September is ideal, but we may not hit, hit that um for the sole purpose that there will be a new board in July and there will be uh further board actions on other matters for the Milani community. So um I don't feel pressured to find, to, to hit this timeline of September and I'm o- open to uh going into the fall and or next year to help the DPR identify some of these parks, not so immediately at September. So that's my thoughts, members, just so that we're clear. Um final thoughts, Karumi, Mary and Ed, and that's it.
Nate, a quick question. Would you be able to share who initiated, initiated this proposal?
I did.
Mary, go ahead.
So when you have an unleashed dog park. Is there fencing required around the park? To protect uh the community? Or is it wide open?
Was it for off-leash, you said, or on leash?
Un, for, if you have unleashed. Uh, permission, will those parks be fenced to protect the community? In case the dog wanders off?
Yes, absolutely. So we wouldn't ever make an off-leash dog park without in the entire area being fenced and there being a designated entry and exit gate. So that's why, again, we're going for kind of the off, on leash parks more or on leash privilege more. Because off-leash parks, establishing one is a little bit more involved where we would have the fencing. We would look at irrigation to see if we could um provide a spigot for the dogs and then we'd have additional signage as well. Uh, so that's, that's a consideration. If you folks wanted to look at an area within these parks to designate as off-leash. Certainly, we're willing to have that discussion. Uh, but again, that's just a bit more involved because it takes a bit more of an investment and you have to scope out an area.
Ed, no, we, we closed it. I said it was gonna be Karumi, Mary and Ed. Ed has the final comment. Go ahead.
Yeah, I'm, I'm a dog owner myself, but um, just one question here. Uh, if we're looking for a consensus, are we gonna put the onus on the neighborhood board? Um, I think. Would the city at least consider uh doing a press release of some sort? You know, like what you have, you're gonna pass a bill, you're gonna have an announcement and everybody calls. Wherever, whoever responsible and then get the, I think that'll reach the community even. Even um more vastly than the neighborhood board. I don't think every person in Mililani. For example, follows the neighborhood board. It would be nice if they did. But if the city would um say, this is what we're considering. Um, for Mililani, for example, um. You know, some forum where they, they, the, the, the public. Can express. And um have their questions because there's questions already here already. And I'm sure there might be more questions and concerns. Okay, thank you.
Sure. No, you bring up a, a very valid point. So when we issued the letter on April twenty first, we followed that up on April twenty third with a press conference and a news release. Um, that had more information. I'm more than happy. I can, I can forward you a copy of that news release and then we also. Live recorded that press conference so that all the questions and the um, whatever, whatever was said that press conference is. On YouTube right now, so I can share that link with you folks um as well. Happy to do that.
Okay, uh, that's a lot of food for thought. Thank you so much, Nate. And we, I'm sure that this board will have future questions for you, so you might be uh welcome to come back. To answer some of our questions. Um, and we do look forward to uh abilities to partner um as we go through this process together with the Department of Parks and Recreation.
Absolutely. Thank you. And actually, Danielle, I'll reach out to you later to see. Um, I'd love to get a copy of that OIP letter. Uh, particularly as I'm, I'm gonna be joining the Waikiki Neighborhood Board, so I'm. Very interested to find out why they've kind of shackled your folks' abilities to, to speak freely.
Thank you so much, Nate. Thank you. Okay. Okay, folks, we're gonna move on to the community concerns at this time. Is there any community member who would like to come forward to express any comments or concern uh within decorum? Please limit your comments to two minutes per issue for items that are not addressed on this agenda. Please raise your hand. We are not able to recognize members of the neighborhood board for community concerns per the OIP letter provided to the NCO. Yes. Are there any members of the public or not members of the neighborhood board who would like to have? Or provide a community concern at this time? Okay, seeing and hearing none, we're gonna move on to board business. I will turn it over to. The NCO Neighborhood Assistant, Rachel.
Okay, so the first item for the board of business. Is the board member Karumi Kaaupanaaki's three meeting absence. Uh, so what happened is that when a member hits three absences, we automatically send a letter, just how it is. Um, so with this. I just need to know if there's any board member that wants to make a motion to vacate the seat. If there is no motion, then the, the seat will stay uh vacated and, you know, we'll have Karumi on the board still, so.
Can you repeat that?
Sorry, so. Um, so it's mainly just to say. If there's any board member that wants to make a motion to vacate the seat because a three absence had occurred. From a board member. If there's no motion, then the member will continue to serve the board if they would like to.
Okay, members, uh, actually. On a point. Of information for the, for Rachel. Has the member, has member Karumi Ka, Ka, Kaupanaaki, sorry, folks, I'm tired. Um, contacted the NCO office wishing to stay on the board?
Yes, so we received a letter saying that she would like to continue to serve on the board.
Okay. Members, is there any motion to vacate the seat despite the member's wishes to stay on the board? I will note that the member has won her election in the beginning for the July twenty twenty five term. We're in the middle of a call for a motion. So no motion heard.
So since there's no motion, then Karumi will stay on the board still.
Okay, thank you. Marilyn, you have a question?
Okay, yeah, my question is, Rachel. Um, does that, does that apply to the new board? If this person is reelected?
Oh, so you mean like even if, for example, if this had been vacated, vacated the seat. Would this person be able to continue on the next term? So, so that answer would be like regardless, so let's say we did vacate the seat. Uh, she will continue to be on the board next term, no matter what. Yes.
Okay, so welcome back. Congratulations to Karumi for maintaining your seat. Okay, next up. Rachel for the uh second board member.
Okay, so next one, we'll do the board member for Rudy Rana. Uh, he also had three meeting absences, so. Um, I, we did not receive a letter, but I did speak with him prior to the meeting. Um, he did want to continue to serve on the board.
Members, I will note that Rudy Rana also won his election beginning in the twen, July twenty twenty five term. With that said, is there any member who would like to make a motion for member Rana to vacate his seat at this time? Seeing and hearing none.
So Rudy Rana will continue to serve the board. Thank you.
Congrats, Rudy, welcome back. Okay, next up, we got the approval of the meeting minutes. I'm gonna turn this over to our secretary, Sabrina Gustafson.
The minutes from Wednesday, April twenty third went out. There was a question regarding uh HPD's first question. Do you have to have your registration, safety inspection, ECT, ECT stands for et cetera, in the vehicle? Otherwise, I received no other questions, comments or changes. I move to approve.
Rachel, go ahead.
Does any board member wants to have any amendments on the minutes? If I don't hear any, then the miss for April will be approved.
Any amendments, board members? Seeing and hearing none, Rachel.
Thank you. The minutes hasn't been approved.
All right, we have minutes approved and we're gonna move on to the reports of chairs and boards and committee, or board committees. Uh, first up, Chair's report, just I wanted to share uh with the board that um. Our esteemed first ever. Board Chair of the Mililani YPO Melamani Neighborhood Board, Mr. Chuck Prentice passed away. And for the record, for folks who aren't aware of the history of the Milani Neighborhood Board. This is the first neighborhood board created in the entire. Island of Oahu and in the Neighborhood Commission and a board, a board structure. So Chuck Prentice, uh, along with many of our. Original community leaders, including Marilyn, including Richard Poyer, including Bill Bass and such. Uh, led this initiative uh here in Mililani to create the first, and actually Sam too. To create this uh neighborhood board. And back in April nineteen seventy five, so we are the first and he was our first chair. So uh, I'm very grateful and thankful to Josie who. And Rachel for writing a certificate in his honor for his leadership to create this board. Um, unfortunately, I was ill and so I am very thankful and grateful to Marilyn for attending. Chuck's funeral as well as uh Marilyn and myself chipped in for some beautiful floral arrangements and she said very kind words. On all of our behalf as well as read the beautiful certificate uh Josie wrote. For, on, on our board's behalf, so I just wanted to recognize um. Josie, our Community Recognition Service Awards Chair. And Marilyn, a longtime Milani community leader and member uh for this. Really touching uh outreach so that we as a board can commemorate Chuck and his leadership. Thank you, Marilyn. Thank you, Josie. That completes my report. Members, are there any questions for me? Seeing and hearing none, we're gonna move on to Alex Ozawa for the Committee Partnerships and Committee Outreach Committee. Alex is not here tonight. We're gonna move on to Josie for Committee Recognitions and Service Awards. Josie.
Thank you. Haven't received any new requests. I guess for our board members, if you want somebody to be recognized, you can send an email to. Her bass and myself and um, we, we can communicate and see if it, if we can issue them one. No report, thank you.
Thank you, Josie. Um, members, any questions for Josie? Okay. Martina is not, uh, not here tonight. We're gonna move on to Trevor for Planning, Zoning. Sustainable Development and Community Resilience.
Uh, no report this month.
Okay, any questions for Trevor, members? Seeing and hearing none. Next up, Skylar Ross for Transportation and uh Oahu Metropolitan Planning Organization.
No updates.
Any questions for our Transportation Chair members? Seeing and hearing none, we're gonna move on to Dennis Kim, Military Affairs and Emergency Management.
Yes, military wise, uh, just to. Give you an update, the. Uh, Aviation Brigade has, seems to have fully moved in. If you're driving up Camp Highway toward Wahiwa. And you look on the left side, you'll see the barracks and the offices. Then you'll also see the hangars. And as of this week, I think you'll see a lot of helicopters parked right in front of the uh hangars. And they're still constructing other places, but. Uh, just to give you an update, if anybody is interested in taking a tour of the new area. Uh, give me a call and we'll see if we can arrange something. And that's my report. Thank you.
Let's set that up. Yeah, let's do it. Members, any questions for Dennis? All right, um, if I can, I just, uh, I would, I received an email from the twenty fifth ID. Saying that there's a special noise advisory, and you jogged my memory for it, special noise advisory. For this Friday, C seventeen takeoffs and landings at Wheeler, everyone. So remember that noise number that the army keeps giving us? Call those folks when your neighbors call you, okay? All right. Next up, Darsha for Health Homeless and Houselessness and Human Services.
No report. Thank you.
Members, any questions for Darsha? Okay. Uh, next up, Sabrina for Parks and Recreation, Pasutti, Main Central Wahoo Regional Park.
No report.
Any questions for Sabrina? Okay, and Marilyn for Education.
Oh, thank you, Madam Chair. I have a very short report, but. Um, you know, this, the um school year is quickly coming to a rapid end. And yesterday or Sunday, um, four hundreds. Over four hundred students graduated from Mililani High School. I received a picture of the graduates and it's pretty impressive. At the University of Hawaii. And also, um, there was a. Uh, Golden Scholars Event here at Mililani High School on the fourteenth of May. And you'd be amazed at the kind of awards and scholarships that many of the. Students in the community received. Very, very impressive. And then there was also a um. On the seventh of, the fourteenth of. Um. Getting my dates mixed up, but there was also a recognition of the. Middle school students who received special awards. And there were a lot of students that received very good rewards. And then most of the elementary schools will be having their last um official um. Assembly um to recognize the fifth graders who are moving on. And so that's all I have to report and we'll go. And um. Our, our, our students are doing well in Mililani and um hopefully we'll have another good year. Thank you.
Thank you, Marilyn. Uh, members of the board, any questions for Marilyn? Okay, seeing and hearing none, we're gonna go into elected officials report. I see that Nestor Garcia is here online representing Congressman Ed Case. Go ahead, over to you, Nestor.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board and those who are watching uh in person and online. Uh, Madam Chair, I did uh actually sent, I hope you got it, um, the report for the second quarter um last week online. Uh, I also dropped it in the chat for the board members. Uh, for those who are not able to access, I just want to go over quickly. I think what the Congressman really would like to highlight was the fact that he did actually uh walk the neighborhood. I was with him. Every step of the way. Uh, we visited several uh neighborhoods in his congressional district, including Mililani. Mani Malka, I was with him when he visited the Milani Shopping Center, dropped in a few shops. This is then one off of Kipapa Drive and then we went over down to um YPO Acres. Uh, um, this is his attempt to try to actually go to where the people live instead of having people. You know, to an end to um. His uh online talk stories. So um he decided, let's just walk the district, so. I was with him all those times. Um, he also wants to point out that even though we've been. Aware of what's been happening uh on Capitol Hill and with the Trump administration. Uh, he wants to also refer to the kind of work that he does uh for constituents. Uh, with um their own personal concerns. For example, I deal. Uh, with veterans' concerns and with the Office of Personnel Management. People have problems with their retirement benefits. Uh, for the first quarter, the first three months of this year, we dealt with more than four hundred. Um, such concerns. Taxes, social security and the like. So um for those that have questions regarding their federal government and. What it may not be delivering for you, servicing you, then. Uh, if you live in the congressional district, please call our Honolulu office. Eight oh eight six five zero. Six six eight eight, uh, if you need any help with a federal agency. Um. Congressman has been busy the last few weeks, um. Beginning with uh. The first year twenty twenty six appropriations requests that come from the administration. Uh, it's on two C, key subcommittees in appropriations, um, defense and homeland security. That's, that's just one ball that he's juggling in the air. The other ball is what's called the National Defense Authorization Act. And you might be quite familiar with that. It's the federal law that we have to pass every year. Um, that sets policies. Uh, for the Defense Department, you know? So um, that also is under consideration. Um, obviously, it'll be the purgy of the House Armed Services Committee. But he did weigh in on that. There are five such issues that he um shared in the press release that we. Uh, put out to the media just the other day and also can be found on his website, case.house.gov. He talks about those five issues of special relevance to Hawaii and to the Indo-Pacific. Uh, he uh was in Honolulu just yesterday. He did pay a visit to. UH President, um, Wendy Ansel, to talk about the concerns that the university is facing. UH President, um, Wendy Hensel, to talk about the concerns that, um, the university is facing. Um, and, uh, we are hoping to have actually an online, tell a talk story, hopefully next month. So just stand by, we'll be putting out the word out, uh, to the community so that people can weigh in online, um, that happens. That's it for now, Madam Chair. Uh, members of the board, any questions that you might have?
Thank you Nestor. Members of the board, members of the audience, are there any questions for Congressman Case's office? Robin, please approach the microphone, introduce yourself and the name of the, your name for the record and ask your question to Nestor for Nestor Garcia for Congressman Case.
Hello, it's Robin Nelson again. So I know you just mentioned something on defense that has to be passed. Um, I was wondering if Representative Case was aware of the memo coming out of the Undersecretary of Defense on May fifteenth, which calls for trans service members, officers that wish to continue their service being rooted out, having their medical records ransacked and possibly being separated under JDK. That separation code is a national security threat. If trans service members don't voluntarily get out, um, that's, that's the stick end of the carrot and the stick. Uh, I wonder if your office had any input on that. Thank you.
I can, uh, alert our district, uh, I'm sorry, our DC office and see, uh, if we are aware of this particular order that you cited from the Undersecretary of Defense. So, um, we'll take a look at that and we'll put it back to you, Madam Chair, and the board members the next time you meet.
Thank you Nestor. Members of the board, members of the audience, are there any other questions for Congressman Case's office at this time? Darsha, go ahead.
Yes, I had a question about the teachers, um, who are here, they're, um, they were here on visas on Maui, um, who are erroneously believed to be, I don't know, people weren't supposed to be here. Um, I'm wondering if there's any update on, um, any steps that they're taking to make sure that these types of things don't happen again, um, just because it should be easy to identify somebody's here on an F-one visa that they are in a certain location and that that location is not for a different person. So I'm wondering if there's been any, um, follow-up to like reach out to the teachers who were erroneously identified as being not, not supposed to be in this country and two, if there's any steps that are being taken to make sure that this type of thing does not happen again.
Okay. Um, I'll consult with, um, I think Congressman Takura was taking lead on that, but we can consult with her and find out, make sure that that doesn't happen in this congressional district as well. So, um, I'll get back to you on that. I was quite, I, I was aware of the media reports about what happened on Maui as well as on the Big Island, you know? So, um, I think there's been some scattered incidents on this island, but not to the extent that we saw on Maui on the Big Island, so. I'll get back to you on that, to see what, uh, we are doing to make sure that doesn't happen again and to make this team make sure that ICE understands that, um, you know, they're innocent that get in the way of these things and they do not be.
Thank you Nestor. Members of the board, members of the audience, are there any other questions for Congressman Case's office? Okay, seeing and hearing none. Thank you so much Nestor, appreciate it.
Madam Chair.
Okay, next up we got Tony here, representing Governor Green's office. Welcome Tony, thank you for being here.
Are you going to be able to hear me with this down here?
Going to have to bring it up a little, sorry.
Okay, thank you Chair Bass and members of the board. Um, I have two questions that were brought up last time that I wanted to address. Both were related to DOT projects, the first one being about the um, Kamakama Highway Improvement Project. I know that Chair Bass had brought that one up. So the Hawaii DOT did have a presentation at Rep Lachica's, uh, Safety Talk, uh, Central Oahu Safety Talk not too long ago where they did provide an update on that and they gave it to me. I knew that was going to happen. Well, it's these, I can get them, don't worry. It's fine. Thank you Leslie.
Uh, just actually going to pass it down anyway.
So they mentioned two projects, uh, related to the, um, safety improvements for Kuahalani to Lanu Kahana and the two projects to add bike pedestrian connections along Kamakama Highway between Kuahalani Avenue and YPO Uka. They, uh, second. The first project will address a crosswalk, uh, add a crosswalk and improve the existing traffic signal system at Kuahalani in Phase One and will add a bike and pedestrian path between Kuahalani and Meihula in Phase Two. The Phase One has been awarded and a contractor was given notice to proceed on October twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four. Phase Two will be advertised November of this year. Um, the second project to continue the bike and pedestrian connection to YPO Uka will be advertised for bid in July twenty twenty-seven following Section one oh six, Section seven, six E and HRS three forty-three, uh, approval. And they gave me an update today. They said that the contractor did, did scoping in the field this morning for Phase One. So it's moving, finally. Uh, the other question I got was Sabrina, um, mentioning the growing traffic issues with the safety checks and uh, that's the second thing that I dropped there, uh, if you want to pass these. They have a PDF on their webpage of all of the active locations for safety checks for small, for vehicles, like, uh, cars and light trucks. It does need to be updated, but I looked through that list and there are only two locations for Mililani and those two were Goodyear and the other one that's backing up onto Kamakama Highway. With Goodyear, um, out of the mix, they have to update that to pull them out of it, but I just so happened to have to go to Goodyear, uh, to get some maintenance done about four or five days ago. And their phone was ringing off the hook with people asking, do you do safety checks? And they answered them to say not anymore because the guy retired who did it. So they're actively looking for someone to do it so they can restore that service. Um, so hopefully we get the second one back. Otherwise, there are no more in Mililani offering the service other than the one that you see on the roadway. Um, there are a lot in Waihewa and there's a whole bunch in Waipahu, but that's, that's what I have for you guys.
That's great feedback, on-the-ground work. Thank you so much Tony, much appreciated. Uh, members of the board, members of the audience, are there any questions for Tony, uh, to relay and uh, provide a response on behalf of the state or the governor's office? Mike, go ahead.
Yeah, they got this, uh, Camp Highway down by Waipahu entry in two thousand twenty-eight to be repaved. The roadway is in extremely poor condition right now. Is there any way they can move up that timeline?
The highway repaving is also something that they spoke at, uh, Rep, uh, Lachica's conference. It's in a PowerPoint that they provided. I didn't actually print out those. I gave the whole link to Rachel if you guys want to review it. Um, looking for it right now. I know it was in here unless.
Hi Anne, could you mute your mic, please? Thank you.
It keeps, you, someone keeps turning it on. I didn't do that.
So, uh, they, it is part of it. I didn't go over that part, but they, they are actively working on that stretch as well.
Any other questions for Tony? Go ahead, Mike.
Yeah, I was, um, pretty surprised too. They said that they're not going to widen Camp Highway through Kipapa Gulch. It's going to be a two-lane highway right now forever. That there's not, they're not going to have the money to widen it. And I'd say with, um, the growth in central Oahu, the two thousand and fifteen arm towel dragged me down to a federal highway meeting to tell me how they were going to make a four-lane highway out of it as it's the secondary corridor if the H-two freeway ever goes down. So it's a very important project to widen it to a four-lane highway.
I'll, I'll make a note.
Um, can they ever do it? It's, I mean, they promised on the Land use Commission hearings for Colridge that they were going to do it. Now they're saying they're not.
That's the last message I had, so I, I'll bring up your, your point again with them. Thank you.
Any further questions for the governor's office? Okay, seeing and hearing none. Thank you so much Tony. Alright, next up we got Tracy here tonight, representing Mayor Blangiardi. Welcome Tracy.
Not that tall, okay. Good evening Chair Bass, members. Tracy Kubota, Mayor Rick Blangiardi's representative. Um, a few things to mention. I know the report for mayor has been distributed, um, but Parks and Rec has a few things happening that's coming up. Um, first off, they have for Keiki to Kupuna, they have a bunch of things happening this summer. Registration for Summer Fun, uh, begins May twelfth to May sixteenth, so that's PAL, but they're also getting enrichment classes for the Kupuna. Um, there's walk-ins that are available. Their programs are, um, found online at, uh, Summer Fun, oh, HTTPS slash bit dot L Y slash Summer Fun Map. And then you've got this other site that they have that you can go and, and apply on, um, which is for Summer Fun Jobs. They were recruiting people and are continuing to provide programs throughout the entire island. Um, they did a wonderful job at the Memorial Day this past Monday and are, as you can tell by Nate's report, hustling for all the communities to provide input on dog parks. Got a response for you from last month's questions. Um, first one we've got is Mililani District Park Concerns. Um, this one was one was for the bathroom, um, conditioned to be spuced up a bit and the other was for the play structure where the slide, the slide used to be um, has a wooden board and a hole. So DPR Maintenance Supervisors were saying that they would take more time to inspect the restrooms and make sure it's cleaned properly. Um, they wanted to, um, inform the community that when the park is unmanned or the staff leaves for the day, um, they don't have after hour crews to maintain the restrooms. Staff hours are from six thirty AM to three o'clock PM. Um, and they've been increasing, as you can tell by all news reports, like a bunch of vandalism at their park restrooms, especially those that are not locked at night. So they encourage the community to, um, reach out to nine one one if anything is being witnessed as far as illegal or unpleasant activity. Um, the play structure, they said that funds have been in comfort to repair the slide on the play apparatus. Um, the vendor has ordered the equipment as of March seventh, but there has not been an ETA on the recent arrival time of this equipment. So and when they do receive it, they will replace. Um, last month, we also had a question on the HNL Alert System, um, from Board Member Gustafson. Um, the Department of Emergency Management is asking for a little bit more time to provide more of a complete and detailed response. So this will be continued over to next month. So we'll make sure that happens and gets back to you. Um, I'll be willing to take back any questions for next month if you folks have any to share right now.
Members of the board, members of the audience, are there any questions for Tracy, uh, to relay to the mayor's office in the city and county of Honolulu? Okay, seeing none. Thank you Tracy.
Okay, thank you. I wanted to make sure I extend my mahalo to all of you for your time, commitment and dedication to the community. I had just informed Chair Bass that I'm going to be retiring next month. So twelve years with you guys, thank you for all the support. I wanted to make sure I mahalo the NCO staff, Rachel, Jackson, Dylan, Lloyd, they are the ones that make this job seamless. And they have been providing you folks the continuity and the support from the departments and the agencies to get the questions and answers that you folks have asked over these years. I've served from the nineties, Representative Lee, we've been through all these boards. I went through Kaneohe, Kailua, Hawaii Kai, Aia, I did, um, Diamond Head, uh, Waipahu, we've done Waikiki and then Mililani Maoka and here. So, you know, I've done a number of services for the Neighborhood Commission, um, boards, which I feel that you folks do a magnificent job representing the communities. I want to thank all of you and wish you aloha. I'll be around. I live in Maoka and so I'm around. So anyway, just want to thank all of you, but thank you very much. Thank you.
Well, we're your favorite, right? Okay. So members, um, unfortunately, yes, Tracy, well, we love you and we love, we appreciate everything you've done for our board, you know, even when you represented Representative Lee and Representative Oshiro who was like a part of our Neighborhood Board jurisdiction back in the day. Um, unfortunately, we weren't able, you know, due to the short notice, we couldn't recognize you in a timely manner. So members, don't you worry. I'm going to call Tracy. We're going to get her back and we're going to give her her proper send-off so that she gets all the lynch, gets all the certificates that I know many of us want to aloha, aloha her with, yeah? Okay, so don't worry. So this isn't, this isn't goodbye. Okay, this is to you and you coming back. She can't be on this board, we'll go call Dean. Okay, folks, thank you so much and thank you Tracy. Um, I want to move on to, uh, Councilmember Val Okimoto's office.
Hi, good evening Chair, good evening Board. Aaron Wilson with the Office of, uh, Councilmember Okimoto. Uh, the council member wanted to first congratulate, uh, uh, the twenty twenty-five grads and their families. Uh, the council's entering the third reading of the budget, um, for fiscal year twenty twenty-six. Uh, it's five point, uh, five point uh, one four billion dollar package which prioritizes infrastructure, housing and public safety. Uh, there's a hundred and forty-three point eight million proposed to develop affordable housing and enhance homelessness, uh, support facilities, eighty-six point one million dedicated to improving city parks and six hundred and fifty-seven million dedicated towards public safety. Uh, for District Eight, the council member, uh, has requested over five million dollars in capital improvement projects, uh, including three point seven five million uh, for traffic safety improvements throughout Pearl City, Waipahu and Mililani. Uh, there's also one point one million, uh, dedicated towards, uh, park improvements. Uh, she also, following the recent wildfire threats, uh, the council members addressing community concerns about the emergency evacuation route, uh, in specific palisades. Uh, last meeting, someone asked about, uh, when the helicopter would be operational. Uh, H, uh, HFD anticipates that to be July first. Um, oh yeah, and one last thing, uh, earlier in the year FEMA updated their flood map, uh, which determines the flood zones. Um, the councilman will believe that some of these areas were not evaluated correctly and has put an official appeal on behalf of the, uh, those residents. Um, with that, uh, I could take any questions back.
Thank you Erin. Members of the board, members of the audience, are there any questions for Erin on behalf of Councilmember Okimoto's office, Elise?
Um, hi, my name's Elise Carmody and I called the, uh, Councilmember's office, uh, last week or the week before about the elevator over here at our transit center, which is out of order. It's actually dead, apparently. They had to replace the cab. Um, it got set, set on fire. So people can't, uh, people have to take the stairs or they have to walk all the way around the block in order to get up and down and to the, uh, buses down to the shopping center.
I'm sorry, one second. Uh, Anne, could you mute yourself, please? I can't, I can't hear very.
Again, someone is turning my mic on.
Sorry about that.
Hello, okay. So I'm, my question is, can the, uh, councilperson look into getting some kind of emergency funding to get this elevator fixed because I was told, I talked to DTS and they said it was going to cost between two and three hundred thousand dollars to get it fixed. And, um, there is insurance money, but that money, when it comes, will go to the general fund, not necessarily to, to DTS, so. Um, you know, we've got a major ADA issue here and, uh, you know, attention needs to be put to getting funding designated to replace that elevator as soon as possible. And also to make a com, in the meantime, to make accommodations. And also to make, in the meantime, to make accommodations for people who have, are handicapped that need assistance getting from and to the bus. Since if they can't handle the stairs. And there's a lot of that because people have carts and things that they are now having to kind of drag up the hill, drag up the stairs or, or walk all the way around the block. So, thank you.
I'll make a, I'll make a note of that and see what we can potentially work out.
Actually, I'd like to piggyback on that, Aaron. That's, does DTS not have a repair and maintenance section of their budget in their, I mean, my goodness, they operate the rail for goodness sakes, right? So they have a significant budget. So an excuse like that to a resident that two hundred thousand dollars for an elevator repair, which is, you know, something about public safety and compliance for eight, federal ADA laws. That should be, you know, routine maintenance issue.
I agree with you. So again, I'll, I'll let the council member know, then reach out to DTS in the morning.
Appreciate that. Any other questions for Councilmember Okimoto's office? Okay, hearing none. Looking forward to that feedback, Aaron.
Thank you, good evening.
Okay, next up Kelly Anaya, representing Councilmember Matthew Wires Office. Kelly.
Aloha Chair, can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can. Please proceed.
Great, thank you. Kelly Anaya from Councilmember Matt Wires Office, thank you for having me. Just a couple of things I wanted to highlight. Councilmember wanted to thank the community for coming out to the mayor's town hall and sharing your opinions and concerns and suggestions. Also wanted to, he also wanted to mahalo all the brave men and women for their ultimate sacrifice for our community during Police Week a couple of weeks ago. Councilmember was honored to join his other fellow council members as well as the mayor and the governor earlier this month. Also wanted to highlight that the city recently celebrated the largest one-time vehicle deployment in the city's history with the blessing of seventeen new emergency response vehicles. These additions included fourteen replacement ambulances, two crisis outreach response and engagement units or CORE and one specialized community medicine ambu bus. These vehicles are supposed to be deploying this month, if not, if they haven't already. And this is gonna be island wide. We also have the city dog park, dog park expansion, but since Nate covered that, not really need to cover. A couple legislative updates. Bill eighteen, which would allow the city to lead by example in reducing plastic waste by reducing the single-use plastic bottles in city, or rather vending machines located on city facilities. With the exemption of the blind vendor program passed third reading and was signed into law by mayor on May second. Bill fifteen, which would provide financial relief for local families in regards to the state's Despool conversion, also passed third reading and is currently with the mayor for signature. Bill thirty six, which would allow the mayor to access to the reserve for fiscal stability funds during economic downturn has passed second reading at this month's full council. Bill twenty nine, which would extend the real property tax exemption for qualifying affordable rental units has also passed third reading and is currently with the mayor for his signature. And then one update from last month. I believe Board Member Lee had expressed concerns about the crosswalks at Cypress and California Ave in Wahihua. Just wanted to let you know that I did submit your request. In addition, I also submitted all the other crosswalks along California Avenue that are in need of repainting. DFM is aware of your requests, but no timeline has been provided. If anyone has any questions for a council member, I'd be happy to take them back.
Thank you, Kelly. Members of the Board, members of the audience, are there any questions for Kelly Anaya on behalf of Councilmember Matt Wires Office? Seeing and hearing none. Thank you so much, Kelly.
Thank you for having me.
Okay, next up, is there a representative available for Senator Kidani's office?
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Board, members of the public. My name is Trevor Nagamine. I'm here on behalf of Senator Michelle Kidani tonight. So just some quick highlights from Senator's newsletter. So, one important piece of legislation that Senator Kidani supported during session that is now awaiting governor's approval is Senate Bill one three zero zero. This is relating to school meals. And it basically expands the state's free school lunch program to include students who are currently receiving reduced price lunches. And then beginning with the school year, the twenty five, twenty six school year. I'm sorry, beginning with the twenty five, twenty six school year, students who are eligible for reduced price lunches will receive free school lunches. And then in the future, the program will be expanded to eligible students based off of their family's income level. So additionally, some items that are in the budget bill this year. There is the mathematics and financial literacy, which appropriates funds to expand curriculum initiatives for classroom teachers and public pre-kindergarten learning. This is the, the pre-K initiative, that's an initiative that's currently being led by LG Sylvia Luke. And other than that, I'd be happy to take any questions.
Members of the Board, members of the audience, are there any questions for Trevor representing Senator Kidani's office? Seeing and hearing none. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, next up, we have Charles from representing Senator Dela Cruz's office.
Hi, here Chair. Thank you Chair, the keyboard members. To start off, I'll just talk about HP three hundred related to the state budget. Some capital improvement projects around Milani, there's six million dollars allocated to the Milani High School covered court. Two million dollars, as previously stated, to the FCA teacher workforce housing at Milani High School. Then there's eighteen point six million dollars for improvements at Camp Kamamea Highway between Milani and Pearl City. And then I know that the University of Hawaii was concerned because of the federal cuts. So, one hundred and thirty three million dollars is going to UH Student Housing Solution Systemwide. Ninety million dollars to modernization and improvement systemwide. And then fifty five million dollars is being allocated to the community colleges statewide. And then on the operating side for UH, seven new positions for financial aid. Two hundred and ten thousand dollars for mental health technician services. Eleven new positions to expand the pre-nursing pathway. And then a million dollars is being allocated to the Aloha Intelligence Institute, which is AI-based career learnings. And then some other notable bills. SB nine three four requires the city and county of Honolulu to complete the Pearl Highlands Park and Ride Facility, improving the skyline access for central local commuters. And then SB ten forty four relating to stabilization of property insurance expands the Hawaii Property Insurance Association and the Hawaii Hurricane Relief Fund to help condo owners who are unable to obtain insurance on the market. And then, I know there's a concern over mental health and veteran hotlines. I could not find anything on veteran hotlines. But SB fourteen forty two, which passed and was transmitted to the governor is child and adolescent mental health division in the Department of Health. And that's all I could find on that. And then Senator attended Milani High School graduation last weekend. Thank you Chair.
Thanks Charles. Members of the Board, members of the audience, are there any questions for Charles on behalf of Senator Dela Cruz's office? Julie Charles, could you restate the bill number on the Pearl Highlands Transit Center and elaborate on what that bill does, since that was a priority issue for our board a few years ago?
Yeah, so it's Senate Bill nine three four. And then it just appropriates the funds out of the Mass Transit Special Fund for the fiscal year twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six. It's for the planning, design and construction of the park and ride facility. And then it establishes a project priority list for the use of the remaining Mass Transit Special Fund. And I can get more details about it and I can bring it back to you next board meeting when the governor approves it.
That would be helpful. I know that we did pass a resolution to that effect of appropriating or requesting our legislators and congressional delegates to appropriate monies and encourage Hart and DTS in the city and county of Honolulu to reopen access to the Pearl Highlands Transit Center as well as provide a park and ride since the parking garage station was deemed too costly by the city and county of Honolulu. So we still, you know, as a neighborhood board, did prioritize the need for a park and ride. So if you're able to elaborate or your office could elaborate on SB nine three four and how that would be beneficial to our community in the next meeting, that would be helpful.
Yeah, I can do that.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Okay, any final questions for Senator Dela Cruz's office? Hey, hearing none. Thank you so much. Thanks, Sherry. Is Representative Lauren Matsumoto available or a representative from her office? Okay, seeing and hearing none. Next up, Representative Trish Luchica, who's here with us tonight. Thank you Trish.
Aloha, good evening Chair, my chair members. Representative Trish Luchica, representing District Thirty Seven, Mililani, Milani Maoka, Waipio and Corridge. I have, I'm sharing my May and June newsletter with you and I believe the digital version has been uploaded to the Google Drive as well. So some key highlights, we have some CAP that has been appropriated to the district. That include a lot of significant improvements focused on Kamamea Highway. So really focused on the resurfacing from Waipio, from Ka'uka up to Waipahu. Across, through Kamamea Highway. At my talk story on May first, Director Sniffin went into more detail on the highlights of those, as well as the timeline. It's also being replayed on Olelo right now. We also appropriated funding, which I worked with the Department of Transportation. On this, it's just additional fencing and signage to really prevent future unauthorized encampments by the Kipapa Gouche area. So we're gonna continue to work with DOT on the timing of this, as well as the planning and design for what this could look like, as we want to make sure that it would, make sure that it continues to be safe access in that area for bikers, pedestrians, as well as motorists. Some GIA highlights are mentioned there too. Several of my bills did make it through final reading, past final reading. As mentioned earlier by Sherry from School Facilities Authority. House Bill three two nine enables SFA to develop more preschool classrooms under LG's Ready Kiki Initiative. We're also currently working to identify a public pre-K here in the district. It also includes the two million dollar appropriation to enable the Mililani Workforce Housing Project, the very first statewide to address the teacher housing crisis to continue on. So this was, they supported by House leadership as well as the Finance and Ways and Means Chairs to get this through conference. And House Bill twelve thirty one is the, is being shared as the largest transportation equity win this session. It establishes the largest source of dedicated funding for the Safe Routes to School Program, which, what it would do is it would fund community safety infrastructure within a one mile radius of every school across the state. And so this would include crosswalks, sidewalks, anything that would enable Kiki to safely walk, bike and roll to school safely. This would, the estimate funding for this would be raised from five hundred thousand dollars, which is what they're currently receiving annually, which is a small number for CIP projects to about five thousand, five million dollars annually. My school bus bill is something that I'm very excited about. So along with Senator Kidani's School Meals Bill, SB thirteen hundred, it is going to be scheduled to be signed into law on Friday. We have a ceremony at Washington Place. And it'll be at twelve noon and it's gonna be fully packed event, so they're limiting the guests who can attend, but it's quite exciting. And it's gonna enable the DOE to expand options so that those who currently operate CDL passenger vehicles such as motor coaches, shuttles, mini buses can enter the market and work with the DOE to help transport students to and from school safely. And make, make this permanent. And then on the, mentioned by Tony earlier was the community safety talk story, which was attended by Director Ed Sniffin, the new director of the Department of Law Enforcement, Mike Lambert. He focused mainly on fireworks enforcement and the new bills that are coming into law, which includes now it'll be you, allowable evidence to use drone technology for those who are lighting up fireworks in any public area. So that includes city streets and other streets. If they light it up in their backyard, that's not permissible evidence, unfortunately. There's also increased penalties as well as additional funding for the, for the task force. And then at the meeting, so we planned this community talk story over a couple of months. So we worked on several projects. I gave them five pages worth of just all the projects that have come up over the last years. And then we worked through each of them. So these are the ones that are gonna, they share during the talk story, which if you scan the QR code or go to the website, you'll get a copy of the slides, the full slides that Tony mentioned. So some of these were already mentioned. But the one thing that'll be added is on Meheula Parkway, the on and off ramp, Meheula H two on and off ramp, there will be new race crosswalks and flashing beacons. There's gonna be a new rapid flashing beacon too, right by the Mililani YMCA across from the bus stop by the high school. And then just additional shoulder and parking lanes. Those are the white stripes hatch marks where it helps to narrow a road to reduce speeding. And then just several other traffic safety improvements across the district. The green walls, as you drive up Cam Highway on the right, across Waipahu will also be made beautiful with a mural that will be in partnership with the schools in the area. And finally, in the back page, we've just received several reports on just reckless driving and illegal racing in the late evenings on Cam Highway. So we worked with the Traffic Control Division to just, you know, do additional enforcement in the area as Meheula Parkway isn't typically part of their patrol zone. So this was the report that they provided as part of their enforcement in, from March to April. So they will, they did commit to continuing to doing spot checks. So if you've seen folks recently being pulled over all the way up to Maoka, it's because there's just been additional enforcement in the area to crack down on dangerous driving. So that concludes my report and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Members of the Board, members of the audience, are there any questions for Representative Luchica tonight? Yes, Dennis.
One question. I noticed you have the funding for repaving Cam Highway from Waipahu up to Ka'uka. And then on another reporter says it's gonna start in twenty twenty eight.
That's correct.
Any chance of moving it up? The road's getting pretty bad.
Tony actually printed the timeline, the backside of the handout that she distributed to you. So they, that's how they explained how it goes, because it does, it is crazy. So unfortunately Director Sniffin told, and thank you to the members from this neighborhood board who attended that meeting. But he said that's just really but he said that's just really one, the how the design and planning takes place. He's like, I wish I could give you better, better report. But yeah, 2028 is unfortunately when that, and I know it's in really, really bad condition. So he heard, he heard all of it from the community.
Members, are there any further questions for Representative Luchica tonight? Members of the Board and the audience? Darsha?
Hi, thank you, Chair Bass. I just wanted to follow up on something that was in the newsletter from last month, which was the vaccination rates for the Milani schools. And I was trying to see, I know some of the schools had as high as like a third of their students without up-to-date vaccinations. And I was wondering if there was any follow-up with like outreach or identifying barriers to getting people vaccinated or getting them able to be connected with those services.
So the higher spikes are from the middle and the high school. And it's when we ask the Department of Health about it. And this is 23 to 24 data. They still don't have the current school year data. They said that it is likely due to the required HPV vaccine as you enter seventh grade to middle school. And so those are the reasons why it's either triggering like an incomplete record. And so that's why that there's a higher, higher rate of like missing vaccinations for those schools. But for the most part, a lot of the schools in our district are gratefully like in compliance with a lot of the required vaccinations at the elementary school level.
Any further questions from Board members or members of the audience for Representative Luchica? Okay, thank you so much. Thank you. All right, last but not least, Yvonne is here online representing Representative Peruso.
Aloha Board members and community. I'll start off with putting a few links in the chat, if I'm able to. Sorry, give me one second. But as I'm doing that, I just wanted to give everyone an update on Rep's work since the session has ended. I won't reiterate the bills that legislators and other offices have already mentioned, but one in particular that's been really close to our office has been HB 969, which would prohibit a landfill over any major aquifer. So that has been transmitted to the governor and we're hoping for a plan for when that will be signed by him. But going to the links that I put in our chat. So Representative has updated her newsletters on her website. So if you click on that first link, you'll see all of her newsletters, at least most of the ones that we have on file digitally in that section of the newsletter, including our main newsletter, which is also in your Google Drive. And if there is anyone who wants a physical copy, we're not mailing out as much as we want during the interim. But if you would like a physical copy, I've provided my email as well. So you can send me an email and then I'll mail you a physical copy. One thing I want to highlight that she's been working on this month is her community forum. So she held part two of our Kuliana Community Forum in the Milani High School cafeteria on May 12th, where she invited President Hansel, David Day, who's the Special Assistant to the Attorney General, and Will White, the Executive Director of Hawaii Appleseed, where they discussed public, protecting our communities and public education. So if you would like to listen to the recording, we have it on her Facebook page there. And we are also planning a few other community forums in July and August. Those will be either in Wahua or Waileua, but elsewhere in her district. So we invite you folks to stay tuned and keep your eyes out for those events.
Okay, members of the Board, members of the audience, are there any questions for Representative Peruso's office? Okay, seeing and hearing none. Thank you so much, Yvonne.
Mahalo.
Okay, we're going to get go-to announcements. Before I proceed, Marilyn would like to state a correction.
Yes, when I was giving the information about Milani High School graduation, I said 400 and that is incorrect, and it was 630. And we're proud of those 630. Thank you, Chair.
630 graduates. Thank you, Marilyn. Okay, so our next Board meeting will be held here at Milani High School H Building and online Wednesday, June 25th. That'll be our final Board meeting for this term. And so we're going to recognize outgoing Board members, as well as other entities who may be retiring or leaving. And of course, you can always catch the broadcast of these meetings at Olelo, Channel 49, every second Thursday, 9:00 AM. Channel 54, every first and third Saturday at 9:00 AM. With that, it is 9:45. Members, we are adjourned.